At this time, we'll move on to public comments. There are several. Just as a general rule, the board does not necessarily engage in conversation with those who are making a public comment, just for clarification on that. I would ask if you are making a comment, and I believe everyone's talking about the seven-period day, if you could please address whether or not you've spoken with Mr. Norby, your academy principal, especially if you're a student, your academy principal, or anyone else at administration, before your comments today. I would appreciate, we would appreciate knowing that information. So, we'll start with Hunter Manley. And, Mr. Manley, is my understanding you want the 32nd one?
Yes. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I am here to speak and present this petition on behalf of the 343 students who have signed it and countless others who were unable to sign it because of my lack of foresight and planning. We humbly ask that this board not change the current eight-hours block schedule or that my attempts to convince you fail. That at least pull up the vote more carefully, consider the issue. Here is the petition in all of it. There are roughly, like I said, 343 signatures, and we probably have more. We will recount it later. But I believe the reason why we should keep this eight-hour block scheduling is because it helps us students maintain homework. Like, for odd days, I would do even homework, and for even days, I would do odd homework. And that really helps us regulate how we do homework. Because there are some teachers that give a lot of homework, and then there are some teachers that do not give a lot of homework. Also, if, let's say, I miss a day of school, or I miss a couple of days. I believe it would be better not to miss all of my classes. Instead, just miss, let's say, English, math, and social studies, and make up those classes. Instead of missing every single class and have to do all the homework, granted, they would give us enough days to make up that homework, it would be beneficial to us students to have those extra days for more homework done. Some students have told us whether or not we are too young so that you guys would listen to us. They have given us constructive criticism on how to proceed about, how to address everybody here today, and we've taken every single word into consideration, and thus is why we are here today to present to you this petition. I believe I can speak on behalf of all my colleagues that have helped me on this petition, that we thank you for letting us come here and speak to you all today. One statistic that brings up, in the telegram, says that 70% of all teachers polled supported this schedule change. But I'm sure that any poll can be made to what you say that you want it to be. And I can assure you that if any survey were taken that had more substantial response, I am certain that more teachers would be in favor of the block scheduling. Yet again, I would like to say thank you for letting us come here and speak to you all today, and that's all I have.
Would you like to give us the petition?
Yes.
We'll attach it to the minutes for the today, tonight's meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond Day.
I'm here with the same group as Hunter Manley, and I'm here with Cameron Espinoza and Genesis Contreras, and we're all for using the same petition. We collaborated on it. We're not just asking this because we're afraid of change, and we're not just doing this because we're not aware that there are benefits that have been said that would come from the seven-hour schedule, but we've carefully considered this, and all these people who have signed these petitions have considered this, and we respectfully disagree with this. Some students, like Hunter said, have become cynical about whether the school board would even listen to us, because we aren't really old enough to have earned, like, the respect and the prestige that some of the teachers who could get up here and talk about it have. But we are confident that the board will see kind of beyond that and just see our arguments and not dismiss us because we aren't voting age yet. One statistic, like Hunter said, was 70% that was brought up in the Garden City Telegram. I can guarantee you, just from talking to teachers and from other people having talked to teachers, that if that survey were accurate, it would be almost completely the opposite. The teachers have to remain neutral, but I'm very confident that they are, the vast majority, especially chemistry teachers who need the time to set up experiments, and physical education teachers that need the time to actually get anything done. So, there's that. And then, the school, well, both the staff and the students are severely opposed to this schedule. Don't just take my word for it. Ronnie Knight, a lead negotiator for the teachers' union, has publicly supported maintaining the schedule already instituted by this board. She has given the example of her children also being strongly opposed to it. This just shows we aren't a small minority viciously opposed to change, but rather, we represent a larger movement among the student body and the staff who are unable to sign our petition for neutrality's sake. We firmly oppose this change, but I have several reasons here. I can't go into all of them, and Hunter touched on a couple of them. But one that I would really like to explain is the loss of an elective and how this is going to really affect us. This schedule change is going from eight periods to seven periods, and that means we're losing one elective. And you might not think that's that big of a deal, because core classes are the ones that are the most universally appreciated. But for someone who wants to be a mechanic or something, a trade class is indispensable. For someone who wants to be, like, a lawyer, someone who, if they want to take debate, that's indispensable to that. If they, if someone has a family history of heart disease and they want to live past 60, physical education is indispensable for that. And you can go into almost every elective. These are very important classes. And to say that students can just do without one of these, and furthermore, these are classes that we choose, this is a freedom that we've currently been given, and to say that we can just lose these is simply false. And it insults the teachers who dedicate so much time to subjects that they firmly believe will actually improve the lives of their students. Not just get their GPA up, but they actually believe that these classes are going to make the lives of their students better. And this is going to be taking away their opportunity to choose one of these electives, and it's making the choices even harder. And you might say, well, it's only one elective, but what if we cut only one core class? What if we only cut science or only cut English? It would be catastrophic for our education, and we'd quickly fall behind other schools in the state. He touched on several of these reasons. That if we missed a day, it would be a lot harder for us to make up seven classes instead of four. Another thing is that...
32nd.
Okay, thank you. I'm just about done, anyway. These are only a few reasons. The 378, we counted just before this meeting, it was up to 378. Students signed our petitions, and we humbly ask that you carefully consider our request. I know there's a lot of misinformation, rumors, and unsolicited claims going around, at least at the high school, on both sides of it, on both sides admittedly, even on, especially on the side that I'm taking. There's a lot of misinformation going around at the high school. And so, if you're unsure about the facts or what I've said, just, I urge you to put this vote off, at least, at the least, until you can investigate and pull yourself about this really serious controversy. And I know that you'll do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Day, have you spoken with the administration about your concerns?
I talked, I talked to Mr. Norby today about just making an announcement about it. I haven't talked to him personally, no.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Genesis Contreras.
My name is Genesis Contreras. I'm a sophomore at Garden City High School, and I'm here regarding the schedule change. We did talk to administrators. As a, me and Hunter, when as representatives for our group, we talked to Mr. Norby about the schedule change, and he gave us some, he gave us some pointers on what the schedule change is going to be about and how it's going to better us, and we've been taking that into consideration. So, I'm here to talk about the disadvantages after I've looked at all the advantages of the seven-period block. Seven-period, eh! I'm sorry, kind of nervous up here. I don't think that shortening our schedule is actually going to better our education. Personally, I feel that 45 minutes isn't enough for a math teacher to explain how square rooting can actually affect us, how this works, how to apply it in real life, and how we can actually use it. They could use 45 minutes to maybe explain it and cover the bases on it, and then send us home with tons of homework, which might actually confuse us. And a lot of students don't actually have enough time to come after school and talk to their teachers and be like, hey, I don't understand this, because a lot of them have after-school activities, may have to take care of little brothers, might not have the ride or, like, transportation to get to places. One of the advantages that they told us about the seven hour is that they might have zero hour, which is where you go in the morning and you do your electives in the morning. But I've been doing a little research, and we discovered that it might not actually be official. So, even if we do have zero hour, it might not actually be official to us, and we might actually still get an elective cut off, which is kind of a disadvantage, because electives are sort of the things that are setting us, are sort of, like, they're the tone to what career you want to go into. Debate, it shows you the kind of work field that you're going into as a lawyer. Welding helps you with engineering mechanics, and culinary helps you with, of course, culinary. And you don't have enough time to actually get in-depth to everything you need to. Like, in culinary, it might be an hour to bake something, or in debate, you might actually have an hour to build a case, and that might just not be enough time. It's just not enough time to cover actual core classes as well. And even in my English classes, it takes us half an hour just to cover a play and then actually get into depth and discuss it. Where did this literature come from? What did it cover, and how can we apply it into our real life? I feel like the eight-hour block is actually benefiting us because of the fact that we can get into depth of what we need, and we're getting our electives, and we're getting to know what our career choices are, how we can apply it, how we're going to do it. And it's overall more stressful for teachers as well, not just because of the fact that they're going to have more work to grade, but they're also going to have less time to plan it and less time to actually grade. For instance, I'm in orchestra, and it takes us about 10 minutes just to set up, bring the stands, put the chairs, and bring out our instruments, and then tune. And then, we still, if we have the 45 minutes, we're going to have 35 minutes to review it, and frankly, we need more, around 15 minutes to review each music piece. We have about three or five. And we pride our sense in how well we can do it, how well the intonation is, the precision and everything, and that's what we try to focus on, is how to perfect what we already Another thing is, with the seventh-period block, we, some-period day, I keep referring to this block, we won't have mentoring, it'll be shortened for us, and personally, as an early graduate student, I'm trying to graduate early, I use that mentoring time to try to catch up on daytime classes that I might have. Like, for instance, the first two periods were math and English. I try to catch up on the homework they just gave me during that 45 minutes that I have, and then during the night, I focus on my next time, my night-school homework, so I can even out my homework. It's just overall a lot harder for students to catch up if everything is thrown at you at the same time. And a lot of colleges go for block scheduling, they don't actually have the seven-periods. So, if we accustom our students to have 90 minutes throughout the class, it's kind of like we're building up their stamina towards classes to help them, like, learn, this is how you're going to do it, you have to take notes at this time, okay, this is the time that you can use to do your homework, this is the time that you can talk to your teachers. Overall, what I'm trying to say is, seven-period is not a progression to our future, it's actually diminishing our education, and it's not actually helping us. Thank you for your time, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm not as good as those students, not addressed as much as those students, but good job, guys. Great job. Give them another round of applause. I left my phone back there, I had my timer on, so you might have to give me 30 seconds, sorry. I think I'm going to give you a warning, so. Just a couple days, I did talk to Norby, it was, I gotta lay it over, I got a stomach tear in my stomach, sorry. But I did talk to Norby, it was late today, he returned my email, so thank you, Steve, I appreciate it. And meetings all day until about 4 o'clock, I finally got him emailed, I think it was later than that, about 5 o'clock, sorry. The question that I asked him, I am told 74% of high school teachers don't want a seven-period day. When I asked him this, he says, well, that was a survey done by the GCA. Well, Hunter nailed it on the head, right there. He said, you can make any survey, get the response you want. Okay? You can make any survey, get the response you want by how you worked. 74%. That was dealt with more planned time, is what I'm told, from Steve. I am told most of the students don't want a seven-period day, so why is it believing it? But these are questions I asked Steve. And I said, were the students being surveyed? No. Why wouldn't you survey the students? They're the population, they're the kids that are doing it. Survey the students. I mean, that's important. I couldn't care less what the administrators say. Students are the most important. That's what we need to worry about, the kids. Kids are the future, you know? So, my daughter, my daughter's a great student. She's 4.0, she should be in National Honor Society, but I didn't read the email I got from the counselor, and I chewed her butt out, too, but, you know, she says she's worried about handling seven classes a day of homework, you know? If we're not going to, if we're, they ain't, but Steve told me they might regulate that or have regulation or don't know, but some people might not, but, I mean, I don't know. So, and then I'm told the number of electives will be reduced. I came as a smart jock. I was a smart jock. I needed electives. See, I could do math, I could do English, but I came as a smart jock. For me to be eligible for school, I had to pass the classes for to be able to go play basketball, play football, play baseball. If I didn't have those electives, I wouldn't have made it, okay? And I'm pretty smart. Jean was on my board, she could tell you. Steve was on my board, he could tell you, so I am pretty smart. Since our district has used both schedules, this is the biggest, this is the biggest mind-boggling thing, I think, and I asked Steve this, we've used both schedules. We used the seven-period day when I was going to school, six-period day when I was going to school. And we went to block scheduling. We've had success in both. What's been our dropout rates? What's been our graduation rates using both those schedules? I'd like to see the breakdown of that. I think, Day is your day, Brian Day, you said, you know, get the data, get the numbers, investigate it more, I think that's important. And I did ask, I did ask Steve this, I said, do kids go to school for math and reading or they go for electives? Well, you already heard those two students say what they come for. That's their career choice. That's what they want to go for. And Steve said, they do, they, he says, I hope they go for the whole experience. And I would agree with that, but I go back to electives. Electives are really what's, what's driving. You get a small percentage, like my daughter for one, who's great at math, she's great at English, 4.0, but you're talking a small percentage of students, okay? I am told they build a new high school for block scheduling. Well, I got a 1998, 2008 bond-issued flyer, okay? In here, it says, "Enhance career and technical education programs." Then on the backside, it has a Q and A. "What are the likely consequences? Instructional strategies used in smaller learning communities to address truancy, dropout rate, and student treatment." Well, I emailed, I didn't email, I got an email from a, forwarded to me from somebody else that used to be an administrator in the school district, okay? And he said, "Fewer class breaks dramatically reduce the number of opportunities for negative student, student interaction, fights, conflicts, and that up." And I remember here, when they was going through this bond, they wanted to have less transitions. Well, if you only have four transitions in one day versus seven transitions, what's that going to create? More things. And I went to school here when I had a JDA, and I had to go all the way to JDA, all the way across the street, and I was told from one edge to the other edge of the high school takes 12 minutes. Is that true? I don't know.
32nd.
32nd, okay. Well, I won't get through all of it. But going through the biggest thing that he said that really threw my eye, and he said, they had a seven-day period, they had 14 days of suspension in the previous year for 1,000 kids. The next year, he implemented block scheduling, the same 1,000 kids, the first year, they only had 1,300 suspensions. That's a pretty big statistic, pretty big statistic, so I just appreciate your time, thank you for allowing me to speak. That's my two cents for what it's worth, so have a great day.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
For those of you who don't know me, I am Kim Knight, I'm a junior at Garden City High School. And I'm one of the many silent voices there. Not only would changing to a seven-period-a-day schedule make us lose an elective, but it would also mean many classes would lose effectiveness. As you've been told, it takes time for teachers to really go in-depth in teacher space. Example being, I'm currently taking an AP sociology class with Sadler, and we never finish all the notes that we're supposed to, never once have we ever done that. And a very often thing that happens is, by the time we get to the end of the day, you'll hear Sadler say, sorry, we'll hear Sadler say, oh, great, I only have six minutes left, and I haven't given you my assignment yet. And what happens is, when he does give us the assignment, it's extremely hard, it's a college class, and we have no idea what it's supposed to be exactly, whether it's cultural relativism and its effectiveness, and we need so many questions from him, we don't have the time, and you're trying to take away some of that time, and we don't have enough as it is. One quote I found off in my research was Joseph Carroll of the National Education Commission on Time Learning says that not a block scheduling, it produces a hectic and impersonal and efficient instructional environment. And I would have to agree with that, since I've been, took eight-period day schedule at the middle school, so I do know what it's like. Another, another thing is that I currently receive a note from my fellow students at the high school, because I took zoology this year, and they were all hoping to take it their senior year, or they were sophomores and they haven't gotten to take it yet. We get to go to the zoo, and it's amazing. We get to go out and see the animals. We got taught one day where we were literally right outside with all the animals, learning about diggrades, undergrades, and peltergrades and all that, and it was awesome. We get to see all these zoo employees who will answer our questions for us, but if that schedule changed, we won't have time to go to the zoo anymore, and it wouldn't be an option for us anymore. That's why many of the kids at my school don't like it. There are many people out in the world trying to get schools to change to block scheduling. They're trying to get rid of the eight-period-a-days, and they're wanting it to go to block scheduling now, because they have learned that the time, extra time makes it easier for people to go in-depth in things and teach other students that what we need to do, how they can learn it. Yet, here we are, trying to do the opposite. Many government officials are saying that the high school should change to block scheduling, but don't think imposing it on the masses is the best idea. Yet, here, again, we are trying to impose a schedule that is fighting against the modern Another thing is, before introducing major schedule changes, it's desirable to make a common vision, a good plan, and a strong support of all stakeholders, which would include the students, which you have kind of pushed aside. I'm sorry, but it's true. And, sorry. And, yeah, okay. I get the change to the schedule, meaning teachers get to see kids every day, and would mean people would apparently retain more information. However, if I miss a day, I am now missing all of my classes and not just four. And heck knows, if I miss my math class, I've lost a whole subject, and we're on to a new thing by then, and I have no idea what we're doing by then. That's just missing a day, and luckily, I don't miss all of the classes, so I have a little break. Seven-period-a-day schedule changes, change provides inadequate time for probing ideas and, and tends to discourage using a variety of learning activities. Like, there are certain activities you can't do if you want to have the time, if you only went to 45 minutes. Maybe the activity takes 45 minutes and you still need to talk about it. According to EricDigest.org, critics say that the pace is grueling for eight-period days and seven, six, and lots more. A typical student will be in nine locations, pursuing nine different activities in a six-and-a-half-hour school day. An average teacher must teach five classes dealing with between 125 to 880 students and multiple preparations.
32nd.
This frantic and fragmented schedule is unlike any experience either before or after high school, which pretty much means that, like, the eight-period-a-day, I mean, seven-period-a-day would mean that we are learning all these other stuff in that amount of time. So, in reality, we're not really retaining all that information, because we're getting crammed full with all the information at one time. And, yeah, thank you for listening to me, and, yeah.
Thank you very much. Would you like a 32nd warning?
Please do. I have a tenency grant, yes. If you need one-minute one. First of all, I want to say, I am not up here for or against, I am here for the kids. Whatever decision you guys make, that is what you're going to need to consider. I've heard a lot of things that are being thrown out here, and I want to address a couple of them as a teacher. This has been very, very hard for me, because I am a CTE teacher. I am a hands-on teacher. 90 minutes is awesome for my classes, but this is for the kids, so I had to remove me out and look at all the information that I've been given. As you know, I wasn't here physically last year, so I didn't get to hear some of the conversations that was taking place last year. I've heard some this year, I've talked to Mr. Norby, my principal, I've talked to all my academy people, I've listened to both sides, so this is where I'm coming from. We are an academy, career-based school. In order to have a career in our society right now, our kids have to be very strong in math and in English, and we are struggling in both those areas here in Garden City. In order to do that, our students need to be with their teachers every single day, because they forget the concepts from one day to the next. Yes, homework is hard, don't get me wrong, and they like to do their homework on one day to the next day, and they only have four classes to do that. But from talking to the students, I asked them, I said, do you even think about it until the day before your class? And they don't, because they figure, well, English is tomorrow, so I'll do English tonight, my next class is in two days, and I'll And they like to do their homework on one day to the next day, and they only have four classes to do that. But from talking to the students, I asked them, I said, do you even think about it until the day before your class? And they don't, because they figure, well, English is tomorrow, so I'll do English tonight. My next class is in two days, and I'll address that later. So they forget what the teacher's giving them instructions for. With a ninety-minute day, we do give them more time in class to do that. However, with a seven-period day, they're going to be seeing those teachers every single day. They can review one day, do hands-on the next day, and so on. So either way is not necessarily the right way. We have to decide what's best for our kids and our school. As a CTE teacher, my senior class needs to be ninety minutes because they go out into the community. In fifty minutes, they cannot get in their car, drive where they need to go, come back, and have a unique experience out in the community. It just isn't going to happen. However, my orientation class, I could do instruction one day, hands-on the next day, and give them what they need. Many of our elective classes are the same way. We could adjust whatever we needed to do, but we got to do what's good for the kids. I do not know what all the conversation has been said, but I do know that being able to see a teacher every single day is going to be good. These kids are talking about how if they miss one day, they miss all seven classes. I can count probably fifteen to twenty times every three or four months where I have a student that I don't see for seven days on the block schedule. Because they're gone on Tuesday and Thursday. We don't have school on Friday, so we're on the same schedule again, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday the next week. They're gone Tuesday and Thursday again for a ballgame or an activity. I don't see them again for another two weeks. How does that help my kids? There are a lot of things you have to consider here. I suggested doing a modified block or a modified period. Transitions, as I stated, is very, very hard on kids. We don't want to have a lot of transitions, but we do. Having only four transitions for a block period is better for kids, less discipline, those kind of things. But we got to look at what we need to do for our kids for instruction purposes. Yes, okay. Seven-period day, we have two hundred more minutes a day or a week to have instruction on our kids. But if it's not quality instruction, then it's not worth it. If our ninety-period minute, or ninety-minute period is giving them quality, hands-on, applying those applications, those kind of things, then we need the ninety-minute day. So I suggest, I don't know how much research has been done. I don't know how long the committee has been talking. But we need to look at maybe doing a modification so that those classes that need those ninety minutes can do a double block, and those that need only, that need to be seen a teacher every week, matching them up. We have great quality people that can do a good job scheduling, so maybe match math and English together so they each have a five, or a fifty-minute class period every single day, and still leave those open blocks for those CTE people that need those ninety minutes. We got to look at what's good for the kids, whether it be seven-period or a block. That's my opinion. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Alicia Simpson. Can you use a thirty-second warning?
Yes, please. I'm an English teacher, I talk a lot. I'm going to kind of piggyback off from what Mrs. Durney said about forgetting concepts. A lot of the things I see with my students, especially as an English teacher, is we read a novel, we do an activity in class. I send them home with an assignment. They come back to me two days later saying, what assignment? What are you talking about? A lot of the things I see from my kids is, well, we talked about that two weeks ago. I don't remember it because I haven't seen it for two weeks. So I'm seeing where she's coming from with the modified block schedule as well as where she's coming from with the seven-period day and the block. Some of the things I heard from some of the students was that students, there's more work for us to grade. We'll still have the same number of kids. We'll just see them every day. And in fact, according to the seven-period day schedule, we would have less students based on our efficiency ratings. Another thing that I wanted to talk about was my own personal experience. I grew up on a seven-period day. I grew up on an eight-period day. So I went to classes and had eight classes a day instead of having seven classes a day. I survived. I'm still here. I got all my credits. I graduated with honors. I went to college. I was an athlete. I was a theater person. I was a music person. I was involved in after-school activities. Mind you, the travel wasn't anywhere near what the travel is here for activities. But I still got my things done. I still got my homework done. I still graduated. I still did well on my assignments. And I still think that our kids can do the same thing in our classes. I think the best experience for me too was, as a senior in high school, I didn't have, we didn't have a modified block, but we had a tech school, and I was a tech student. I went to vocational technical school because I was pre-med when I went to college. So I took a morning of classes, four periods of classes. I had a half-an-hour lunch break. And then I took an entire afternoon that was worth eight credits, I think, where I was after-school, working from eleven-thirty to three o'clock, and I was traveling around a bit to the local area businesses. I took anatomy and physiology three days a week and two days a week. I was working, I was observing in ORs. I was working in emergency rooms. I was observing pediatricians. I was able to do all that stuff and still get the college credit and be able to move on and be pre-med. I think our kids can handle this as well. I think that it's a great thing for our students is to have those experiences out in the community, but also be able to have the experience in the classroom. Seeing my kids every day, I can reinforce the activities from the day before. I can teach a novel. And then I can move on to the activities throughout the rest of the week. With athletics, it's hard. I was a coach last year. I missed seven or eight of the last ten seventh-period classes because I was gone on athletics trips. So not only are the kids not getting stuff from me, they're not getting stuff if they're gone either. So I'm not seeing the kids as much, and I'm trying to make up that work with them while still getting them to pass at the end of the semester. Spring sports especially, it's really hard to get those kids in, especially right before graduation. Getting them in there, getting those classes done, getting them ready for finals and getting ready to graduate. So I think what's best for our kids is what Madeline said, doing what's best for our kids. I think the seven-period day is what we need.
And did you speak with Mr. Norby at all?
I'm on the seven-period day committee,